We'll go ahead and get started and it's time we'll turn it over to Dr. Naughton. Welcome to our work session.
Thank you Chairman Francis, members of the board. I just want to say on behalf of myself and the administration, we want to congratulate the four incumbent board members running who were reelected. We want to congratulate you for that and look forward to working with you all as we move forward to continue doing good work. We have several items on the work session agenda tonight for your information and for your feedback as well as for information for those who might be listening in on the meeting or a later recording. And just in the interest of time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Putnam. Both of us have a couple small announcements that we'll add into our list, but they're not critical matters, they're just matters of information. Dr. Putnam?
Let me cut my microphone off. Thank you. The first thing I'll go over, you know, back some time ago, y'all charged us with making sure that we had enough hotspots for everyone. This is just a follow-up to that charge. We have entered into a memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources for 300 hotspots. That's probably far more than we will ever need, but we wanted to have them on hand should we need them. That said, those 300 hotspots will be enough to supply any request we have at this time. And it leaves on hand a good number should we have additional new requests. The good news about this is, and I owe Kim Jackson all the credit on this, she worked very hard, these three hotspots, 300 hotspots will be at no cost to the school system through this memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources. So are there any questions about that?
Is this 300 hotspots in addition to the 200 we already have, 243 we already have?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll have over 500 basically?
That's correct.
Are we going to have to pay the internet service fees on these like the other ones that we were having to?
No, these are at zero cost.
Awesome.
To include devices and services. Now, the hotspots will go back to the Department of Natural Cultural Resources at the end of the year. Think of it like a library, they issue these electronic devices through checkout and then you have to return them at the end of the year.
Okay.
Any other questions on that? All right, the next item is turf replacement and you should have in your folder. Is it next? Okay, I'll go ahead and move to Brown Avenue project then, so we'll stay in order. Going to read to you an email. Sure if we put that in there or not? So Brown Avenue project, just to kind of refresh everybody's memory, has been going on for quite some time. I know as the principal at Waynesville Middle School, it was discussed extensively. It's been in planning stages, it's been through the MPO. All totaled or all told, this project, it tops out at $3 million, $3,000. The MPO is willing to issue $500,000. That's the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And so they have, the reason it got funding and the reason it got selected was because it was a high need, high safety area. However, the funding that the MPO put toward it is only a half million dollars and it's a $3 million project. The town of Waynesville has paid in design fees roughly $185,000. And it is my understanding at this point, all other parties involved are willing and wanting to see the project through have contributed the amount they intend to contribute. That said, town of Waynesville roughly $185,000 for design costs, the MPO $500,000, leaving us holding the bag for 2.5 million and change. And so the email that I received from the town of Waynesville, they are wanting to know or wanting this board to issue a notice to proceed or not. They're just wanting to know, is this a project that you would like to see get off the ground? Is it something you could fund or not? And again, I don't, I try never to answer for y'all, but it would appear at this time, funding for such a project is not possible.
When we originally began this, didn't we, because I'm having to go back a few years.
It's been?
It was like a, we were going to match.
A half, it was like a half?
10% or something, wasn't it?
I was thinking it was like half and half, we were...
Yeah, it was a little more than that. I thought it was more like half and half.
North Carolina Department of Transportation was going to pay a huge amount of...
Yeah. Town of Waynesville and then us.
Right.
Let me read this again.
Because I was thinking that we were supposed to, because it was like 500,000 or something like that for the school board at that time, wasn't it?
In 2015.
Yeah, there you go.
In 2015, if you look on the cost, it has a breakdown, turn over there on your left.
Over here.
There you go.
There you go.
In 2015, 550,000 was coming from the MPO and then the DOT was going to do 80%, town was going to do 20%, they come and ask us if we'd do half of that.
Right.
So pretty much they was going to do 10, we was going to do 10 and it was going to equal out.
That's what it was, yeah.
So, you know.
And that was in 2015. Now where was this $3 million, is it?
That's today's cost.
Is that today's cost?
Yeah, if you, if you look at the top, this is the total construction amount.
But when was this? Day, May 19th?
North Carolina Department of Transportation no longer able to honor the commitment.
Right.
So now they want us to pick it up. I don't need discussing it.
I would add too, just to the discussion, in terms of capital, you all know what we have in, in capital. There's a very small surplus amount that we would definitely need for our central office project and hope that that's enough. So I think best case scenario would be a situation where we told them we might look for a third party person to help us with the funding, but right now I do not see it in our capital funds. And I would throw that in, we could ask someone, we could ask if someone could help us fund it, a third party, we'd have to go out and seek it and see if that came through, but we literally don't have it in the, in the bank with us or with the county.
Well, there is a safety issue there, but it's not insurmountable. We've done it for 15 years now. So spending 2.5 million dollars for a mosquito pond, I don't know.
I think that we, of course can't take action tonight, but we need to put it on the agenda. If it's not, we could add it and then we can formally vote and if y'all would come up with some type of response, sample response that we could look at, then we could vote up or down on that. It's not like it's going to be a dead project. We could always, if somebody comes up with two and a half, three million dollars, be glad to work it out.
Glad to spend it for them.
Sure.
And possibly in the future, you know, and again, there are no guarantees of anything, but in the future, if it goes back to the MPO and they say, yeah, this is a project and we can fund this more fully now, or the DOT says we can contribute more fully now, we have the plans.
Sure. So. And we appreciate everybody's contribution to this point and I'm sorry that we can't continue with it, but again, if we can take formal action Monday night.
If you look at the big scheme of things, we have great needs and this wouldn't hit the top of the priority list.
Yeah, and y'all, y'all know I make a meeting, a long meeting too long, but you know, one of our general philosophies since I've been the interim superintendent is you identify your needs, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and then you spend the funds that you have toward those needs. And in ranking those, first of all, we don't have that kind of capital money available in any account that we have access to that we can spend on it. And second of all, in looking at the projects, I don't think any of us has, have put this as a top need. There are some other things first, so again, I can be too philosophical and too long-winded, but that's typically the way we look at projects.
Any other questions or comments on Brown Avenue project? All right. Last, but certainly not least, you have this in your folder. This, I got a, at 4:34, I got a new email with all the numbers, okay? And regarding turf replacement change order. So Dr. Rogers and myself and Athletic Director Michael Blue visited, as I think other members of this board have recently visited, the turf replacement project at Tuscola High School. The turf looks great, it's coming along nicely. The repoured concrete on the visitor's side that leveled up the, and created a concrete pad for future expansion, should the need arise to tear those old, older bleachers down, to finish that concrete pad on out and go over top of that concrete pad with aluminum bleachers like is already a portion there. But upon review, looking at that, there are some obscure, I'll spit it out here in a minute, curb, I was trying to think the proper term, there's some obscure curbing and fence lines. The first of which, and you should have pictures of these in your folder, the first of which is a, if you're looking at the top, that top picture that shows an obscure curb line, that is in the end zone nearest, the concession stand. To orient you just a little bit, for those of you who haven't been there to view, if you're looking at the corner post nearest the concession stand, looking back toward the visitor's side, so in other words, the home stands are to your right, the concessions to your left, you're looking down that fence line at the back of the end zone. And that's what the curb line looks like. Now, the reason that, that was done, and I'm not, you know, saying yay or nay either way, but the reason that that was done was to mitigate an elevation problem. If you'll remember, there was a, about a three foot bank that rolled down into the playing area. Well, in mitigating that, they had to go back further into the asphalt and carve out an area there so that they got greater distance, which gave you a more gradual slope down to the playing area. So that's how they chose to mitigate that grade right there. And in doing so, it made that obscure curb line. The next picture that you'll look at is if you walked in from the visitor's side and you turned to the right or back toward the concession stand area again, that is the fence line and curbing in front of the visitor's side bleachers nearest the concession area, okay? So you're on the visitor's side, to your back is a section of the old concrete bleachers on the visitor's side. And in front of you, the picture you're looking at, is that fence line and it's actually recessed back to existing curbing. So with all of that said, it created some obscure fence lines, some obscure curbing and with discussion from Dr. Rogers and Michael Blue and myself, we felt it best to consider a change order to correct those obscure curbing and fence lines. And so what you're looking at is a cost for doing so. I can tell you that I have new numbers, they're pretty much the same. So what this amount covers, you see a 3.3 and a half feet by 150 feet turf area behind the end zone, that is to correct that first obscurity in the curbing and it comes in at $41,753. The next one is a two and a half feet by 160 feet turf area at the northwest corner to the coaches box is 400 square feet and it comes in at a cost of $31,812. And then you look at 150 linear feet of a new four foot fence and one new four foot walk gate, which is $5,482. So the total cost for this correction is $79,047.25 to clean up those obscure curbing and fence line areas. What I'd hoped to get and like to thank Patrick Bradshaw for helping me get these numbers, there were some other changes and I did not have numbers. Like I said, I just got this late this afternoon. The other thing that we need to look at at Tuscola was removing some old existing fence to the front of the cheer platform. And I'm sorry, make sure I give you accurate information. Tuscola and Pisgah cheer platform modifications based on Department of Public Instruction Review, including structural changes and a handicap ramp addition at Pisgah. These comments were received after the project had been bid and the total cost for those are $26,526. As for Pisgah and Tuscola cheer platform. Next you have Tuscola and Pisgah field changes related to existing conditions and surrounding grades. These are changes that were requested and have already been performed over the course of construction, $13,909. And if you put all of those together, the total for all above items, that's to include correcting the obscure curbing and fence lines, completing the cheer platforms at both schools, adding the handicap ramp for Pisgah, Tuscola already has one. The grand total on that is $119,482.25. Want to put out a disclaimer, I talked with Patrick prior to getting here, he said these numbers seem in line, doesn't appear that they're gouging us if you will, they seem commensurate with what you would see on other projects. And he said, with that said though, he hasn't, he just got the information today as did I, hadn't been properly vetted just yet, okay? The only other thing that we need to discuss, and y'all have already approved this, but I wanted to put a number in front of you. This is for the padding around, around the perimeter. Will likely land around 130,000 to do both fields complete, but that number can be refined once we choose a specific product in the next week or so. I wanted y'all to know that a sample of that product or that padding will be at Tuscola, they're going to fix it to the fence and folks can go look at it, any of you can go look at it on Monday. So it should be, I'd give it till Tuesday, he just got it today, so if you went next Tuesday, you could go and take a look at that padding that's designed.
Same padding, same, it's going to be black on both sides?
I don't think your mic's on.
It is on.
Okay, good, thanks.
The, that's the same padding that he had with him that day up there, right? It just hadn't been installed yet.
That's correct.
And I think we seen it walking around that day.
Okay.
We wasn't at, we seen it sitting.
Now, is the, if we put padding all the way around the fence, is that, is that going to obscure any of the visibility anywhere or?
There is always that potential because you're putting in a solid covering that you can't see through, but the padding, you know, it's going on a four foot fence, you have to figure every player just about is, well, they're all over four feet, so their view is going to be obstructed anyway. And I am not saying a word, I'm just grinning and...
That's the best option there.
That's right, that's right.
I don't like being in front here. All right, going back to that 13,000, you said 13,000 had already, the work had already been done?
That was to fix that, that field.
Yeah, to fix the, to mitigate the elevation there in the corner.
To fix it right here.
Yeah.
So the question I have is if they spent, if they'd already did that with $13,000, why in the world had they, I mean, does, people know we work on straight lines most of the time? Anytime you build stuff, you work on straight lines.
Come on, bro.
And then you go to a corner and then you turn and you go straight again.
Yeah, come on.
I'm just going to throw that in there. So the 13,000, we even hadn't approved it. You just, they did that and you're just throwing it in this bunch, okay?
That's correct.
Come on, don't start now.
I figured I'd let you jump in.
I'm assuming this will be discussed further in building the grounds on Monday?
Yes, I just wanted the full board to be able to hear the overarching details and then, you know, building the grounds will decide if they feel like this is a motion to come out of that committee to move forward or...
You been down to Pisgah's field?
It's, yes, but I haven't, hadn't looked at it real closely.
It looks really good. And it's...
Straight.
It's the way it should be, straight like Pee Wee says. And these are two things that just jump right out at you. And, and then that corner right there, I guess it's right at the end of the coaches box, wouldn't you say, close? Maybe this side of the coaches box?
No, it's, it is contained in the coaching box because coaching box best, my memory best serves me 20 to 20, so it is well within the coaching box.
Yeah.
And it's, it's basically, it greets you as you come up the main entrance on the visitor's side, it greets you slightly to your right in that area.
It's pretty, there's a safety hazard there and that's what the coach's concern was because there is a corner fairly close to the sidelines.
My, my only question is, I mean, we definitely got to get it right and we'll discuss it more Monday, but my question is in the design and the whole thing, why, how did we get here and need, and need more money, I guess?
Well, in the original design, or at least as, and I, I believe what he was showing me was, was right, Patrick showed me the original design while we were standing down there that day. And the, the top picture was part of the original design. Now, when you're looking at a plan that big with so many different things going on, it's pretty easy to overlook something like that on a blueprint. And I feel like that's probably what we did is just, it was an oversight.
Well, I'm not saying that, I'm talking about the architect.
Well, we would have assumed, like Pee Wee said, that they were running on straight lines.
That's, that's my question.
Yeah.
No, I, I saw the same thing you was when we brought it in here and it looked awful, looked awful pretty.
Yeah.
So the total with the padding and the improvements is 250,000, am I right? Is that what we got?
Pretty much.
We got to have the padding, right? I mean...
The padding was already...
249, 482.
Yeah, but now the padding's already been approved, it's in the...
Approved the padding.
It's already been approved, the padding's already...
With inside of that 1.3, correct.
It was already approved, it was already approved.
Okay.
And in all honesty, they both may fall within range, within the 1.3 that's approved. I just...
Okay, that's what I was wondering, so when money's there, that's what I was asking, okay?
It, it looks that way.
And then the next thing, if Pisgah's looks great, then why are we even talking about it?
I knew that was coming.
There's an election in four years, Ronnie.
Yeah, yeah, but I got the dub you right now.
Another one of those great times not to say a word, there you go.
I, I do have one more question. Now, in this 1.3 million that we've sort of allotted to fix these fields, is that getting new or having the, the goalposts repainted or, because they look sort of old, so they need to, they need a little bit of attention. And as far as the covering over the fence, that, that probably, that plastic covering...
Ridge cap or...
Ridge cap, yeah, is that going to be replaced?
No.
I would just, I would just caution the board to watch the capital amount of money closely.
Okay.
Because you are getting a whole lot done in capital, but you're, you're, you're spending your capital to get a whole lot done. That may be something that can be done now, it may be something that would need to be done after July 1st.
What are they going to do with the top of the fence then? Are they going to put that back on?
Unless, unless the schools have other plans for it, yes.
Oh my God.
Yeah, that would, did it, it looked...
I'll donate some red paint to them goalposts in Waynesville. Black stripes too, I got black paint too.
All right, let's move on. I think yes, is why you need to bring it to building grounds, let's see what we have.
Yeah.
1.3 is what we set, so see what we have inside that 1.3. Could you please bring a design of both fields, the ones that we approved, that we looked at? I don't want the one that was objective that we approved, if it wasn't one, it had to be in front of us, not up there in the office. But the one that we looked at and approved, could you please bring it?
Surely can.
Okay. Any other questions? And building the grounds, I know will take up all the details.
They gonna put that old grammar stuff back?
Well, you know, in, in any project, you're trying to find a...
A cost savings.
A cost savings.
Yeah, we see them.
Shortcuts. That's how you cut the corners.
Yeah.
That's just working on your dupe and skills around the corner.
I'll go ahead while.
I'm at a loss for words on that.
While I'm still up, I'll add one little thing that's not on the agenda. So, we had a little bit of a scare, we're feeling much better now. We were, uh, so our, at the bus garage, we went out and we measured, you know, using the stick. What's the reading, pretty much, see how much fuel we had, okay, it's about a tanker, eight thousand gallons. And so we order it and, you know, all of our systems, I think it's B SIP is the acronym for it. Please don't ask me exactly what that means, but it basically is a reporting tool that says. You ordered this much inventory and you took out this much inventory, so it knows what was put in and what was taken out. And so we ordered this tanker and that local monitor or regional monitoring said, what are you doing? Why'd you, why'd you order a tanker? Why do you have eight thousand gallons coming your way? Can't do this. And they think, you know, uh, our folks go and measure like, well, have we missed something? Maybe we've messed the measurement up. So they go and literally manually measure again and sure enough, it's about a tanker worth of fuel, eight thousand gallons low. So, we're like, oh heavens, could be a leak, could be an interstitial portion of the tank. Could be someone stealing the fuel. All said, uh, I, I say all that to give you a, a positive ending. What we have determined, um, the county, you know, has the, uh, the cap or landfill covering project going on. Uh, the power and/or internet has been killed at least four times up and down. And been down and had us out of commission and Mr. Kirkpatrick's saying five now. And had us out of commission for days at a time on each occurrence. And what happened was when the power returned, it'll, it authorized the P cards that folks have to enter. Or use to access that fuel, but it didn't track it unbeknownst to us. So the electronics were working enough that it accepted the P card, but because of that outage. The tracking of that fuel was down. Talked with Mr. Shepherd today and he said that, uh, seventy-five percent of it has been identified and. Th- this is preliminary, you know, where exactly it went into which vehicle or which bus. Um, and when all is said and done, we will be within, um. DPI's guidance and guidelines for tolerable allowances, uh, which is around eight to ten percent. Uh, so they create a margin there, they know you cannot keep up with every drop of it, but they, they give you a margin of error there. And so we will fall within that margin. So just wanted, in case you were to hear, there's a big old tanker headed our way and then maybe not, you'd know what was going on there.
Scary story, good ending.
Very good, thanks, Dr. Putnam.
Uh, so members of the board, um, one item in your packet, I won't read all of it, but we, uh. I talked with Kevin Elmore, our postmaster in Waynesville, he was very helpful in helping us work out. Keeping our current mailing address, which will be what they call a handoff to Central Elementary. And then when we move to the building to be renamed across from the current office, we'll have our permanent address. But that was just good cooperation, um, from the postmaster, wanted to, to show you that, he and I talked on the phone and I followed up. So, that was good news, I don't think there's a post office box big enough and we really don't wanna change our address. Two times with the literally hundreds of vendors that we have, so that's good news, just an announcement. Any questions about that? Very, very good, as a reminder, uh, Dr. Putnam's told you before, we'll be making that move beginning December thirtieth. And, uh, into that first week, excuse me, November thirtieth, thank you, uh, into that first week in December. Uh, I think the next two, uh, the next item or the first item on the agenda under my name. Is our follow-up to our previous discussion about having, um, Heard, Eisenhower and Lopez. Come periodically to check, uh, behind finance to make sure that we don't miss anything. Uh, and we will bring this agreement, the second page with their logo on it, to the board meeting on Monday. I signed it to get them started, uh, based upon the conversation we had previously. But obviously it is pending your approval on Monday, that has gone really, really well. Uh, we were not behind on any required reporting that we had to have for October. Uh, we split a lot of that reporting, Mr. Hines and HR does what's called the SS two hundred report. And then there are several reports in finance and they're only really gonna be here, um. About once every two weeks, and so that has gone really well. We think the cost, uh, may actually be, um, a little lower than what we. Had in the agreement, but it was an agreement written up to, Pat has seen the agreement, feels good about it, so. Any questions about that, wanted to let you know that will come to you on Monday for your consideration. Alright, very good, the next thing is a bit of a calendar update, uh, we did this with principals. The, uh, tropical storm, uh, time that we missed will be made up on Monday, June the first. And then I wanna do a brief explanation for you all, um, as we move forward. It, it, it sounds really different in making up time, but it's not really different. So, we met with the principals on Wednesday at the principals' meeting. We asked them how much lead time they felt teachers needed. In order to call a weather day a remote learning day. So how much in advance would a teacher need to know to front-load information for students? Like we did on the general election day and the day previous to that, the one we had earlier. Their general consensus was forty-eight hours, we, we feel like in most instances, we know about, uh, winter storms. That far in advance, we don't know the impact of those, so we felt pretty good about that. So what we will do, um, and we, and you know, we post the pending weather announcements, usually a day or two before the storm. Certainly the night before if we can't make a call the night before. So what we will do is, is say to staff and community, if, I'm gonna make this up. But, uh, if we anticipate snow on January thirteenth. Then we would say the previous, uh, Friday or Thursday, looks like a storm's gonna roll in here next week. And it may snow, uh, Tuesday or Wednesday, uh, just letting you know in advance that that will be a, a, uh. Uh, a pre-loaded remote learning day. And if it snows, then we'll pick up the remote learning day. On February the fifteenth, just like we used to pick up workdays that were in that location. We'll move it to the snow day, day that we picked it up from will become a regular student day. Most of you been on the board for quite some time, that's the way we do it. We will do that, uh, if we have forty-eight hours, uh, time notice, and I think we can. For the next two missed days on February the fifteenth and March the nineteenth. We probably will not move April second, right before spring break unless we have a tremendously difficult winter. And those five days that are in there, we've already had two of them, those are required by the state calendar law. That was a change in the state calendar law and those days had to be above our required thousand twenty-five hours. The state has allowed districts like ours, with the snow waiver, to have five additional. Remote learning days, and so we will follow the same pattern with those days. The beauty of those days is we will not have to pull them from anywhere, okay? So, uh, in terms of snow makeup, we have two or three here that we can use and five others. So going into the winter weather season, we're in pretty good shape. So any questions about that?
It's good.
A lot of work there, wanna thank Jenny Valier, uh, calendar committee from last year. Uh, we think that will work well and we'll give it a try as soon as, uh, the good Lord sends us some winter weather. Uh, inclement weather process, uh, not gonna read this to you. Uh, we update this every couple of years, this is all the stuff that goes on in the, the morning. Uh, when we're making a decision about winter weather, who does what, when, where, first person to make calls. Backup people to make calls, we shared this with principals. And you can see from all the names on this list that we have a dozen or so people, including, uh, what we call the morning crew. The bus garage people out in the evenings or in the morning when there's a snow, but it's a, it's a pretty fun process. And I say that seriously, it, it, it gets your adrenaline blowing, especially when it's a tough call. But just wanted you all to have that, somebody might ask you, what in the world, how do y'all do that? And you can pull that out and share that information with them, any questions about the winter weather process for making decisions? Alright, uh, the next thing is I had a request a couple of weeks ago to meet with some. Local members of, um, NCAE, they had done a survey of their membership. They have sixty-ish, uh, some odd members, they got a few more responses than that, about ninety responses. Because I think members forwarded the, uh, survey to other people. And it just wasn't a very comprehensive survey and they knew that. And they asked to meet with me, I think they have supp- subsequently maybe talked to Mr. Francis and he can tell you about that or not. But, um, they wanted the board, uh, they wanted an opportunity to, um, be heard by the board and talk to you all a little bit. Uh, my recommendation would be that we, that we do a, an additional survey. Sometime between now and the end of the semester. I would not recommend any kind of schedule changes before the end of the semester. Because the first semester, as you all know, has been quite topsy-turvy. Uh, but I just wanna let you know that, uh, they have asked for that. Um, and they really had some, uh, survey responses that were pretty small compared to five hundred or so. Licensed, uh, people, teachers and other, other people. So, I, we think our survey probably that we would do would be more comprehensive, might send it to parents again. Certainly other, other people, classified people, teacher assistants, bus drivers. Who might be impacted if you all were to consider any kind of changes, I would certainly not recommend any at this time. And we can look at the data and decide if we need to do anything else with it.
I was contacted by them and had a meeting, a Zoom meeting with two of their officers and, uh, meeting was very nice and cordial. I explained to them that we would, as a board, uh, try to accommodate a survey. And I think I'd already talked to Dr. Nolte about that and, um, as he said, a more comprehensive survey. And I think, you know, the teachers wanna know, want to be heard in what their thoughts are. And, you know, they're the ones in the trenches, that's what I told them in the meeting, I said, it'd be good to hear from the people that are actually in the trenches every day. And get their input, so I applaud Dr. Nolte for getting, he'd already planned on doing this at our work session. Before I had talked to them and so, uh, I think that it's a good response to a request. From a, an organization that does represent some of our teachers.
Yeah, I, I put a little bit of that information in my monthly schedule too for you all.
Very good.
Saw that or not, so any questions about that? And I don't think that's anything you need to, in my rec, I would, in, from my perspective, I don't think that's anything you need to deal with. In, anytime in the next, um, several weeks, couple of months, but.
Are they just wanting a survey done to see how the teachers feel or are they pushing one way or the other or?
They did ask some questions, some of them obviously have some concerns about safety. And you all have seen every time we've made a report, our students really haven't had many infections. There's no transmission at all between students at school. We have percentage-wise, probably as many remote-only students with a positive on a percentage basis. As we do students who are in person, we have had some adult, um, situations where we had positive adults. And we've sent some messages out, emails out to all the staff members about that, where we think they could do a little bit better job. So they were, there were some concerns about safety and, um. You know, again, I don't wanna speak for them and they didn't have a lot of results to speak from either. You know, they had a pretty small percentage of responses compared to the size of our district. There were concerns, I think, about their work schedule and they are working very, very hard. And so it's a matter of balancing, I think, as a board, uh, and I've said this publicly before. It's a matter of balancing providing the best education that we can provide for our students. In, uh, the middle of, uh, the COVID situation with, um. You know, with making sure that we hear our employees and give them workloads that are, that are reasonable. Thank you. Any, any other questions? The only other thing that I have on the, uh, open session agenda is the fees. That we are, uh, required to bring to you each year. We do not have any elementary fees at this time, uh, we have some, uh, uh, grant. Foundational type funds that are taking care of our elementary fees for the most part, and so that's a blessing during COVID. Um, and we have the, um, middle school and high school fees here, most of them are all the same. There are some differences and we talked to them a couple of times, Carol Fox in particular, about those differences. And we need to bring those to the board meeting on Monday, but because some of the fees are different. I wanted to make sure you saw them several days in advance, so at the top, you can see everything up there is the same. Uh, for middle school. Uh, one school does charge for a, a program that they use in, in eighth grade only. That they think, uh, helps benefit them academically. Uh, the athletic, going down to high school, athletic, uh, art are, um, are, are pretty sim. Pretty similar. There, there were some fees that they wanted to increase, but we recommended that they not do it at this time because so many people have been out of work. Uh, concert band at Pisgah has a small fee. And then they have a one hundred and seventy-five dollar larger fee for marching band. Tuscola's is only twenty dollars, it does, it is a little higher some years and a little lower some years. I can tell you as a former band parent at Tuscola, they get those funds, uh, from the families in other ways. And they have band day and yard sales and everything else. So that's a pretty big difference, but both schools seem to be pretty comfortable with the way that they do that. Because their fundraising is different and they felt like the fundraising, um, in particular at Tuscola. Had been in place so long that they're still getting those funds from families, but, uh, more through physical work. And I can attest to that over a five or six-year period. Chorus is broken down into several sections at Pisgah. And it is, um, a little lower than Tuscola's. Again, both of those programs do other things to raise funds and they felt pretty comfortable about that. Uh, the remainder of the fees listed there are, um. Uh, pretty much the same, Pisgah has, uh, some new ROTC people and they did not want to charge a fee this first year. So, that's what I have to bring to you, I wanted to make sure that you saw those differences. The early college is a, an agreed-upon fee, much lower than other college students pay, the traditional college students pay.
Any questions about the fees? Okay, anything else, Dr. Bill, before we. Including going to a closed session or?
No, sir, in closed session, we don't have a, a lot, but we do have one legal matter that I discussed with Mr. Um, Smathers and a couple little. Um, Smathers and a couple little personnel things to update you on.
There will be no action taken out of the closed session, um, meeting, but I do need a motion to go into closed session. Mr. Kirkpatrick's made the motion, Mr. Clark has seconded the motion, are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? They're being done, will all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, we'll go into closed session after a five-minute recess, that's so our technology people can shut down our live stream. And also, uh, vacate the room for us, thank you. We're in recess.